A call to order, the Columbia Heights zoning commission to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Member Nowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Member Hoyer.
Here.
Commissioner Member Zurich.
Here.
It is noted that Schill and Ferriandino are absent tonight.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes from our previous meeting, which was on July 5th?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing. Before I do it, I just want to let everybody know here that there are cards up there that you can write your name on and a comment that you may have and give it to Jody. And she will call your name when we get to the opening of the public hearing. And then you'll be able to come up to the podium and state whatever it is you want to say. Okay? Thank you. All right, the public hearing, case number 2017-0901, site plan review with waivers to the zoning code for 1069 Grand View Way and 4729 Grand Avenue.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Tonight we have a request for site plan review with three waivers to the zoning code made by Dominion. The request has been made to allow for a proposed multifamily residential apartment development to be constructed at 1069 Grand View Way and 4729 Grand Avenue. Subject property has been vacant for a number of years. Originally back in 2003, it had been approved for two separate condominium buildings. Part of the development was completed prior to the recession. However, the two subject parcels have been vacant since 2001, when the previous buildings were demolished. At this time, Dominion has proposed to construct two separate apartment buildings on the properties. The proposed development would consist of 173 apartment homes divided between the two buildings with approximately 86.5 units per building. The proposal calls for 65 one-bedroom apartments with an estimated rent of $939 and 72 two-bedroom units with an estimated rent of $1,126. Thirty-six three-bedroom units with an estimated rent of $1,297 per month. The buildings will contain amenities such as in-unit washers and dryers, club rooms, fitness facilities, outdoor playgrounds and grilling stations, and some underground parking provided for each building. The subject property is located in the mixed-use zoning district. The proposed residential development is a permitted use in the mixed-use district. The zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan specifically identify the subject property to be used for transit-oriented development, and it appears that the proposal for the apartment homes meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. The subject property is located within the design guideline overlay district and is governed by the highway district standards within those guidelines, and in reviewing the proposal, it appears that it meets the design guidelines. Access to the proposed development would be off of 47th Avenue, just east of Central Avenue, by turning north onto Grand Avenue Northeast and then turning east onto Grand View Way. The proposed landscaping materials are shown on their landscape plan. The applicant is proposing to plant trees, which will complement the layout of the development. Overall, the proposal includes 40 trees and installing 800 square feet of landscaped area. The proposal indicates that there will be a monument sign at the corner of 47th Avenue and Grand Avenue, along with a sculptural element for a strong site identity. If the project is approved, the monument sign would need to be approved administratively through our sign permit process, and the sculpture would need to be approved by the city's communication committee. The city's zoning code states that this area is guided to allow for up to 20 units per acre. The site is comprised of approximately 4.94 acres. By this standard, the site would allow for up to 98.8 units. Dominion's current proposal is for 34.9 units per acre or 172.4 units. The proposal does not meet the city's unit per acre requirement and exceeds the maximum currently allowed by 73.6 units, and the applicant has requested a waiver to this requirement. The proposed plan identifies 134 enclosed parking stalls and 135 surface parking stalls for a total of 269 parking stalls combined. The city's zoning code requires that for multiple-family residential uses, each one-bedroom unit is required to have one enclosed parking stall, and each two-bedroom or larger, three- or four-bedroom unit is to have two enclosed parking stalls. Based on the current proposal of 173 units and their current breakdown, the development is required to provide 281 enclosed parking stalls. And the proposed plan is under the required parking stalls by 12, as it currently shows 134 underground parking stalls, whereas 281 of the required parking stalls are to be enclosed. The proposed parking lot also shows the drive aisle to be 20 feet. The city's code requires that each off-street parking space have access to a drive aisle of 24 feet wide, and the applicant has requested a waiver to this requirement. Staff believes that if the applicant wishes to increase densities on the site, that other applicable requirements of the city's code should be met in order to minimize any potential negative impact on the surrounding properties. The proposed plan is to increase the density on the site and does not meet the applicable requirements of the zoning code. The proposal itself has merit, and staff believes that there are many positive aspects to the proposal, as it meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, it would provide additional housing options, and complete the development which was started years ago. However, we believe that the current plan should be modified to meet the other applicable requirements of the city's code. The zoning ordinance outlines four findings of fact that must be met in order for the city to approve a site plan, and staff finds that two of those findings are not met, the first one being the site plan conforms to all of the applicable requirements of the article, meaning the zoning code. And as outlined, the proposed plan does not meet some of those requirements, and that's why those waivers are requested. And then, two, the site plan minimizes any adverse impacts on property in the immediate vicinity and the public right of way. The proposed plan does not meet some of the applicable standards outlined in the zoning ordinance, and as stated, we believe that they should be met if the densities are increased. Staff finds that the current proposal does not meet some of the findings of fact, and recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission table the proposal until an amended site plan can be submitted by the applicant for those subject properties on Grand View Way and Grand Avenue. Finally, if the Planning and Zoning Commission decides to proceed against staff recommendation and recommend approval of the site plan as currently presented with the requested waivers, staff has provided motions below with recommended conditions of approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission could also make a motion to recommend that the City Council deny the application, and in either of those two cases, the plan would go to the City Council on September 11th for final consideration. With that, I am happy to answer any questions. If you have any specific questions for staff, also, our applicant is here and available to answer questions.
Okay. Mike?
Nope. Kind of curious to hear what they got to say.
Not at this time.
Okay. I will listen to what the applicant has to say, as will the other members of the Commission. I guess we have, do have questions, but I'm gonna let you do whatever you want to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. First, I want to thank Elizabeth for all her time in putting the report together and working with us to help explain some of the requirements and give us a little bit of education on what we need to try to meet. We've had, you know, this is, I think, our first formal time for site plan review in front of the Planning Commission. We've had some other discussions on the comp plan. I'm sorry, let me back up. I'm Owen Metz. I'm a partner at Dominion. I've been there about 11 years. Our company is a 45-year-old company based here in the Twin Cities, and we specialize in doing apartment housing across the country. So it's our backyard, and we're excited to be considering another investment in Columbia Heights. As you know, we're working on the one-off of university and doing some housing over there. So appreciate your time, appreciate everyone being here tonight and considering this. Before we got to this point, I just want to provide a little bit of background and kind of the process we took to get to what we submitted to the city for consideration. We had two different neighborhood meetings and really got a lot of really good feedback on some concerns and things that we should try to address, and we think we've gone a long way to meeting a large number of those concerns. Certainly, one of the things we really appreciate about this community is the passion that people have for Columbia Heights and for a strong community and for investment along Central and for additional, you know, investment in the community. So we think it's something we are really excited about and really excited about the opportunity to make another investment and try to bring some transit-oriented housing along Central that takes advantages of the existing infrastructure and really try to complete this project that started, you know, in essence, nearly 20 years ago. So I guess with that, I wanted to highlight a few things to provide a little bit of clarification on some of the points of our application. I'm sure you didn't read our entire memo or narrative. It's a little long-winded, but I think it does provide some good clarity on some of those things. So I guess, let's see, I guess I'll start with the density, and I wanted to, I think this got emailed and might be available in PDF or JPG, but just remind folks of what was approved back in 2003. The project that Elizabeth mentioned was to do condominiums and townhomes. I'm sure you guys are all very aware of this, but I think it's important to reference, and I've got the 2003 planning report similar to what Elizabeth went around this time, and there's some very clear discussion on that the entire 14 acres really that got developed or was in the process of being developed. And at the time, and what the Planning Commission at the time and City Council approved, was a development for the entire 15 acres, and they looked at the density of the entire 15 acres. And the same 20-unit-per-acre requirement was in place at the time, and the proposed development that was approved was 15 units an acre. When you factored in all the condominium buildings, which, if you looked at them independently, would exceed 20 units an acre, but when you looked at the combination of the townhomes, combination of the condominiums, the total site of the entire 15 acres was about 14 units an acre. When you look at what we're proposing and really playing on what was approved back in 2003, we've taken that 15 units an acre to 17 units an acre. So when you look at this, and I'm not saying it's unfair, it's just it's where we are today. We're asking about this particular portion of the site, but I think it's important to highlight that really, when this was approved a while ago, the density of the individual buildings was not looked at, it was the density of the entire 15 acres. And we are still under that 20 units an acre. When you look at this in context with the entire redevelopment, there's a lot of challenges with trying to redevelop failed condo sites, there's existing easements in places, there's existing restrictions to any owner that were trying to develop this site, and we think we've put together a plan that really takes a lot of that feedback and given it our best shot to try to come up with something that we think can satisfy a financial feasibility test, satisfy something that we can build, and try to satisfy as many of the concerns as we can from the neighborhood. It's certainly not without opposition, and I think you'll hear from some folks, I'm sure, and I wanted to highlight some of those things that I think you'll be hearing about. First, the density, I think, you know, that clearly is going to be something that people raise and is raised in Elizabeth's report, but I think, again, if you look back at the bigger picture and say, "How did we, as a city, approve this development plan?", we are certainly within those guidelines of what was approved. And while it is a little more density, that's what it takes to get sites like this done along transit. Certainly, the economy's different today than it was when the condominium building was proposed, and this is something we know we can do. We're very good at it. We do it across the country, and I promise we'll be a strong partner. I promise we'll be a strong asset to the neighborhood. You can see what we're building across town. We do it high quality, and we do it because we're gonna own it for a long time. We're not turnkey developers. We're gonna own it for the next 20-plus years, and this is something that we just celebrated a 25-year anniversary of apartment building we own up in Albertville. That's pretty atypical for apartment owners and developers to own properties for that long. It's our business. We've owned some apartment buildings for approaching 40 years. So it's something that, as a high-quality sponsor, high-quality developer, with our own professional management company, we're positive we're gonna be an asset to that neighborhood and really run a high-quality project. And I'm sure you'll hear about traffic, that this is gonna add to traffic. It's 37 more units than what was approved in 2003. 37 more units than what was approved on this site isn't going to drastically affect the traffic in this area. The infrastructure was designed for that. We certainly appreciate that concern, but we are confident the way we've designed the site and put the underground parking access, that it's really trying to mitigate, and even the extra access point along, you're looking at a different one now, but the extra access point off Grand from what's there today to provide a second access point to the site will help mitigate some of that, and so we really take a lot of care in trying to address those concerns. And another reason that we chose this site, and are really excited about it, is a bus stop 200 feet away. This is a TOD-friendly site. That's something that the Met Council's very strong on. I know there's certain issues with the Met Council we can all agree on, but transit-oriented development allows people to use cars less, allows people to not need a car as much. So it's really something that was really attractive to us, the access to jobs along Central up to Medtronic, downtown to Minneapolis, and everything along the way. It is a perfect site for workforce housing, and that's what this is, is workforce housing. It's people that are working at Hy-Vee when that opens, it's people that are certified nurse assistants, it's dental hygienists. This is people that have a job. Elizabeth mentioned the rents. It's not cheap. Our average rents are higher than the median rent in Columbia Heights, and we're positive that we'll get a quality resident base. I'm sure you hear about crime, you know, there's concerns over rental housing and residents not taking care of their apartment and not really buying into living and being part of a community. We have a resident handbook that is this long that our residents sign, every single resident that moves in with us signs a lease and signs a handbook that says, "I'm gonna take care of my apartment." We have to go through credit criminal background checks, so every single apartment, probably higher standards than most mortgages required to buy a home. So we have very strict standards for folks to get in, and then we make sure that they take care of their apartment. We can affect them, we have a very high-quality professional management staff that will take care of this asset and make sure that we have residents that appreciate their home and really are taking care of their apartment. You know, we don't want to be fixing up apartments that get trashed. We do all those different tests that I mentioned. So I just wanted to point out that that's something that we're not an absentee landlord, we're not an absentee owner. We really have put that staff in place and give them the tools to succeed so they can run a quality apartment community. I'm sure you'll hear that this will affect home values. You know, we certainly appreciate that people make a big investment when they buy a house. We've developed two similar developments. One was in St. Anthony at the Apache Plaza. There was a former failed condo site that Len Pratt tried to do and couldn't get it done. We did an apartment community very similar to this, developed it. It's built, several years have gone by. The condo owners next door have had values continue to exceed the city's average value increase. Similar in Crystal, we redeveloped a former school building and tore it down and built some affordable workforce apartments, and values of the homes around conceding to increase and continue to outpace the city average. So there's really no hard evidence to say that apartment building next door is gonna hurt value. We're certainly sensitive to that. We're not trying to say it's not a valid concern, but we do think that there's a lot of good evidence that backs up that when you invest in something, when you bring a high-quality product in there, it's gonna help add to values and take away the vacant spot that's there now. Parking, I'm sure, is a concern. As I mentioned, this is a TOD-friendly site. That is something that we take very seriously. We don't want to build an apartment building that's gonna be underparked, but we certainly don't want to build an apartment building that has a sea of asphalt parking that's not used. So we think that the amount that we have here is appropriate and potentially even more than we need. We surveyed our apartment communities that are similar and looked at how many adults per unit do we have in one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments. On a project like this, we would expect about 1.4 adults per apartment unit. So if you assume every adult has a car, which I think is a stretch, but in that, for us, for what we see in our apartment communities, we don't see one car per adult, but if you assume there is, we're at 1.55 stalls per unit. So we have .15 extra, which on this number of units is approaching 30-some parking stalls extra for guest parking and overflow parking. So we think we have a very appropriate amount, given the transit-friendly nature of this site. And we really designed it, as you'll see in the site plan, with the parking. It's hard to see on the screen, but the larger tanning wall on the east side of the site and the south side of the site, where the majority of our parking is for surface, is screened by the wall itself or screened by the apartment buildings themselves. We took care to put it where it made the most sense, where it was the most out of the way, and really tried to design a site that fit the existing conditions and took into account the old approval, but really brought it up to current standards and tried to address as many of those concerns as we can. And the last one we can't address is that this is rental and not homeownership. Columbia Heights, according to the 2010 census, has about 68% homeownership. That's right on par with the national average, a little bit higher, and is in line with the kind of rest of the metro on average. Minneapolis is down at 50%, but a lot of the first-ranked suburbs are right in there. St. Louis Park is another kind of site, city, that we've done some work in and has similar transit connections. The rental is even higher than it is in Columbia Heights. So we appreciate that concern, but we think this will provide an opportunity to have high-quality housing along Central that is luxury and quality but affordable in rent and allow people that want to work in the community, want to work at Hy-Vee but maybe can't find a place to live, an opportunity to live along transit, they can bus to work, they can walk to work, they can bike to work. There's a lot of connectivity to jobs and giving people an opportunity to succeed in life and in build some assets and live in an apartment community so they can transition to a single-family. We do affordable housing all over the country, and that's a big benefit of that program is people can get their feet under them, earn a living, can't kick them out for making too much money, the income qualify, and are able to stay there and get their feet under them until they transition to homeownership. So it's a really, you know, housing options to continuum. It's a really niche piece that fits well with the overall housing community. I want to also highlight some of the changes that we've made since the two different neighborhood meetings that we had. We've gone from over 200 units down, and we're actually down at 170 based on current plans as we've developed and further gone into design. So we've lowered our unit count quite significantly. We've added green space and took great care to lay out the site in a way that fits what's there. It's kind of an odd-shaped L-site, so we're limited on where we can build, based on some easements that exist that we can't build on, so we're kind of limited in where we can actually put buildings. We increased parking from where we started. Traffic was a concern, so on the east side of the site, we eliminated an access point that would have connected to the road on the east side of the single-family homes. So we eliminated that access point and made all of our parking a dead end, so there's no through traffic. All of our residents would be directed back out, and so there's no reason that any resident would drive now through the single-family homes, be out of the way. And so that we really designed it to take care of that, and we think that's a positive increase and improvement and something that we did. Really take care to match the existing buildings. It's a nice development that's there. It's very high-quality material, so we're not gonna look exactly the same, but I think you'll see from the renderings and the elevations that we put together, it's really intended to complement what's already there. Building orientation, we spent, you know, had some concern on and pushed back and kind of discussion on in the neighborhood meetings, and oriented the east building, so the courtyard is facing the condominium building that exists today. Did that to really provide a lot of open space, basically, between the buildings. That's, I think, 150-plus feet of space between courtyard to courtyard. So rather than flip the building 180 degrees and have a building kind of face up to the condo and kind of really get it a little tight, took care to follow almost exactly what you see in the original plan, other than a little different unit mix, which resulted in more units. The west buildings, where we've kind of deviated a little bit from what was approved back in 2003, rather than the courtyard facing the east, we decided to have the courtyard face Grand and face Central. We thought it was an opportunity to have a little more active space for our residents as an amenity space, outdoor play area. Certainly, we're gonna have families here, so space for kids to get outside and play. So we put that on the west building, and it'll be screened by that building. So other than driving up along Grand, really putting the more active spaces away from the condo building, there's, as we understand it, there's, you know, not a ton of children in that condo building as it exists today, and so there's concern over noise if kids outside playing. So putting that space on the west building and away and screened from the condominium building. We added that additional access point off Grand. There's currently one that exists today into the site, so we added that extra one and created a little kind of green island there that we're proposing to landscape. It's not our land, it's part of the condominium master association, but proposing to landscape that and finish it off, so it's not just turf and not just grass, but really finish off this site. This has been a goal of the city and community for a long time, to finish a site. We know this might not check every single box, but we know we're gonna make it nice. We're gonna do a really good job if you were to approve this. So we're really taking care to make this feel cohesive and finished and not separate, not different, but really take what was established and what's very nice and add to it. You know, one of the things we think's important, and I know staff recommended against, was some parking along Grand. It was brought to our attention that there's, at holiday times, not a lot of just kind of overflow parking for family members and guests that come, so we thought kind of a bump out on Grand would be a nice feature to help mitigate some of that, that traffic that exists today and certainly will be on there in the future of having some opportunity to have some daytime parking along Grand for folks. So that's something we thought, you know, fits the site, fits the urban nature of the location and access to transit and giving people that kind of, that walk-up opportunity that they can get out of their car, walk up to a unit, put their groceries in, maybe go run another errand. So it's something that we take a lot of care in in trying to make sure that the site fits, is livable, and is really gonna be an asset. It's one of the things I wanted also just to highlight, if we can take a look at that. So there's, just shows the income limits of the people that live here. I mentioned that earlier, but so for a single mother with a child, she can make up to $43,000 a year. So that's a lot of jobs. That's a big chunk of the population in Twin Cities that would be able to live here. I mean, you can see the rent levels that are there, and as mentioned by Elizabeth, but it's, this is not cheap housing. It's that moderate income, so it's affordable for the high-quality product you get. One of the things that Elizabeth mentioned is the in-unit amenities and the common amenities, granite countertops, you know, luxury vinyl plank flooring, every unit has a washer and dryer, provided in unit, free of charge, including their rent. We make really efficient laid-out apartments, so that any, you know, one-bedroom is around 750 square feet, you know, typical market rate, that's even lower in a lot of cases. Trying to think what else. LED lighting, sustainable features that really save on energy costs for the resident and the owner, but really energy-saving plumbing fixtures, light fixtures, all those high-quality amenities you expect and hope but at an affordable rent. So really take a lot of care to provide some high-quality amenities for the residents. So make sure I checked off all my ducky points, so please bear with me. One of the drive aisles weren't really mentioned, where the 2003 approval, what was built next door has 20-foot drive aisles for the public streets, or the private streets, excuse me. So we'd like to match that if you were to approve this, so we matched the existing street. One of the good things about the 20-foot drive aisle doesn't meet exactly your city requirements, but it matches what's there today, so it really brings that cohesive finish to the site. It also benefits by slowing people down. When you're driving in a tighter space, people slow down, so it adds that benefit and allows further for us to open up more green space by having less asphalt. So it allows additional green space and buffer from buildings and different things like that. So I just want to point that out. It is a waiver request, but we think it's very appropriate and really finishes off the site, as I mentioned, and matches what's there. I think that's probably what I got. I really do appreciate the passion from everyone in the community. You know, we... You know, we like to take on challenging opportunities and try to come up with solutions that match as much as we can. We've made some pretty significant concessions, in our opinion. We've done what we can to do those. We can't really go any farther to change this significantly from what is it before you? We're shovel-ready. All the bond financing that we needed from the state of Minnesota is in place. It's a very competitive process, but it's something that a lot of communities are striving for and can't get in their community, so that financing's in place. We're shovel-ready and can proceed to a closing and be starting construction later this year or early next year, if we get your approval and get the approval of the city council. So, it's something that we're really excited about, but absolutely appreciate concerns. So, I'll just finish with saying thank you for your time, thank you for consideration. We really hope that you'll see some of the positives that we really see in the site and see in our design and see in our building, and certainly, we can't check every single box, but we tried really hard to check as many as we can. So, I think that's what I got, and be happy to stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions?
Nothing right now. Nothing right now.
Thank you.
Okay, the only thing I have is the development seems just lovely, and I like the plans and all of that. The thing that just I keep hanging my hat on is this parking. Why don't you put all of your parking inside your building and do like a double, a two-layer of parking like you see at some ramps downtown Minneapolis and St. Paul? And make people park in there so that there is not so much parking going on on the site itself?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's not an easy answer to that. The, part of it's financial. It's really expensive to do a second level of underground parking, and we're trying to build affordable housing. It's really difficult to do that. That added cost would mean that we can't build this. So, that's part of it, but I think equally importantly, we think that the surface parking that's there and where we've identified it and kind of really took care to put it where it's not really going to be seen.
I'm sorry, but being seen is not the issue with me. It is the fact that you've only tried to put in maybe half of what the parking is in underground parking, and the rest of it is going to have to try to fit on the site along with people who come to visit their cars on the site. Who's to say that someone who's in a two-bedroom apartment doesn't have two cars? Then you've got more cars coming onto the site than you would if you said, "All right, each person can only have one car." Well, you can't do that. So, I guess my, I'm still, I'm very concerned, and I don't know how you're going to prove it to me, that that's, that the parking's not an issue.
So, I'll, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so I mentioned this stat, if you can zoom in on the little chart there. But, so, we manage, own and manage about 27,000 apartment units across the United States, and the amount of parking that we have in total is very appropriate for this site. I get that there's a desire to have as much underground as you can. It runs into cost. What I can say is, this is data from our portfolio of similar-type apartment communities in the Twin Cities, and in a typical one-bedroom apartment, we average just over one person per apartment, one adult per apartment unit. On a two-bedroom, we average 1.4 adults per apartment unit. So, it tends to be a lot of single mothers that have a child, or someone that just chooses to have a little extra space and rent a two-bedroom apartment as a single. Most, you know, our demographics of our nation have changed. There's not a lot and not a significant amount of two-head household, two-head-of-household families in a lot of the rental that we have. So, it's just the changing demographics is, and then even in three-bedrooms, you'll see the average adults per unit is in that 1.4 range. So, that's when we looked at and said, "How many adults can we expect on this site?" And it's about 1.4 adults per apartment unit. So, we have 1.55 stalls per unit, so that extra .15 stalls is really where we have that cushion. To be quite honest, we can't afford to build another level of underground parking. Just to fill in a courtyard in one of those buildings, or in both buildings, about a million and a half dollars. Our residents are affordable. They can't afford to pay extra for those parking spots. So, it's really about having a good mix.
And who's going to use the underground parking if no one can afford to have an underground parking spot?
They can't afford to. So, we have about .8 stalls per unit underground. So, the entire footprint of the building is underground parking. So, we're maximizing the underground parking, and to get the math to work on doing developments like this, we need to charge for that. So, it's about $75 a month for underground parking on top of those rents. And so, we know people will want those. It's Minnesota. People still want to get out of the snow. But, in order to not have too much underground parking.
Could you maybe turn off your phone? It's very distracting. Yeah, I would have asked you to do that earlier, but I thought everybody would do it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's quite all right. So, that, we want residents to have affordable parking. We want residents to have enough parking to do the underground. This is a ratio that we're very confident will work in the market and location, given the TOD, and having the mix between some underground, some surface, that doesn't cost the residents extra. So, it is a balancing act.
You understand that our ordinance calls for a different type of parking, as per the number of units you have? So, you're asking us to forego our zoning ordinance and what it calls for in order to just make, so that your project will work?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, it's, this is a situation that exists across the metro. This isn't a unique situation in Columbia Heights, and especially on a transit-oriented site. Parking, we have a lot of parking that was built at apartment buildings that sits vacant because as car sharing has come up, as Uber's really taken off, and now you're on a transit-friendly location, we have more parking that was built than was built up in Fridley at Cello Apartments. So, there's not a huge demand for that much parking for a location like this, and it's only getting lesser. So, that is the main reason. It's really expensive to do. No one else is going to be able to afford to build that with two-levels of underground parking. The math's just not going to work. And so, I appreciate that that's your zoning requirement. I'm not sure how long it's been that way, but as development has changed and times have changed, it really has shifted for what residents have for parking and what their demands are. Not to say we don't need any. We're at 1.55 stalls per unit. That, you know, we've done developments that have less than one stall per unit in similar transit locations, similar access to transit, and it works just fine. So, we are confident this will fit the site and be appropriate for the site, given the access to transit and given the opportunity to develop the site. Can't tell you other than my word. I do, we do a lot of this. We're not going to invest $40 million to build an apartment building that doesn't have enough parking, because we're not going to be able to rent the apartments. So, we're trying to really balance, and to do that amount of underground, I've never, I've never worked in a community that requires that amount of enclosed underground parking. And we didn't want to start building exterior garages and doing stuff like that. It just made more sense to do the surface. You know, we work in a lot of communities around the Twin Cities, and I've, I can't name a community that has that level of underground parking requirement. I'm not saying it's not without merit, but it, given a TOD friendly site.
Would you like to rewrite our zoning ordinance for us, so it works for you? I'm sorry, that's what the zoning ordinance calls for, so. Okay. I, there's no way I'm going to get the answers that I need. You cannot give me a guarantee that we won't be overrun with cars and all of these people will use transit. I mean, I have no guarantee that that's what's going to happen. I would like, if you had done your homework, maybe you would have come with, to us with the numbers from maybe Albertville. How many cars are actually being stored at apartments in Albertville or some of your other sites, so that we know if that's what really is going on at transit-oriented rentals? I just do not want to overload that site with parked cars. You know, a person can take the transit and still have a car in order to get themselves everywhere else they want to go. That's...
And we had six months of the year, Columbia Heights has no parking on the city streets at night.
Right.
So, there's no place to join overflow, and technically, it's six hours during the day.
Well, it really isn't the street. It's part of the...
Right, but they'll be parking on 47.
Absolutely, yes. Yep.
And they'll be parking on the city streets.
People already are. Okay, well...
Yeah, and the only thing I'll say, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we're very close to meeting the total number of parking stalls your ordinance requires. So, I can appreciate that you're concerned.
It's like 20, what is it, Elizabeth?
You're like 100 spots short.
12 spots short is my...
Well, it's... 12 short?
It's 12 short of the requirement, but then there's the, about half of it is surface versus half that's enclosed.
So, I appreciate that it's a concern. 12 spots. We can add 12 spots. I can't put them underground. I'm happy to add 12 spots.
No.
But then you're going to get the people that can't afford the underground parking, and they're going to go on the surface, so...
But our residents, Madam Chair and Commissioners, our residents won't rent if they don't have parking. We're not going to build something that can't be leased. So, we're, we have an appropriate number, and that's why that balance between underground and surface is really important, and we meet the overall spots. If we have overflow and our residents can't afford the parking, guess what? We're going to have to charge less for the parking. So, that's going to come out of our pocket. So, if that is a problem in our residents, we're not able to rent apartments because we don't have parking, that's going to affect it. The parking count, we're right there, and we're happy to add those 12 spots if that would be a condition of the approval. Now, we're talking about whether they're underground or not. I appreciate the concern, but I just, we're right there on the number, so we're serving what we need to meet in your code. And so, now it's talking about, are they all underground? Are they not? What's the mix? I can't sit here and say, "I can add more underground," because I can't. But I'm happy to add some additional spots. There's green space that we could convert into parking. We had it and actually took those 12 spots out because there's concern about not enough green space, and that was some of the neighborhood feedback, and we had a lot of other people that say, "I don't even have a car. I want to use transit." So, it's, on average, yes. If every single person has two cars, every adult has two cars, every unit has two cars, we're not a problem. But the reality is, that's not going to happen. That assumes every single person has two cars, which isn't the case, and we meet the count. So, I just ask you to think about that and say, "Yes, there's a concern of parking," but we've got the numbers, so it's whether they're inside or outside. We think we got a very good solution on how to...
Time will tell. We'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's no other questions from, you have questions of staff that you'd like to ask? No, and you neither, Stan? All right, then, I will open it to a public hearing. I would ask you, you can see there's a lot of people here, to keep your comments short and to the point, and if you want to speak, you need to have filled out a card. And she has the cards up there, and she'll call him in order of when she got them. Thank you.
First is Cliff Johnson.
I've got a couple of things I want to highlight. I myself...
Would you state your name and your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cliff Johnson. I live at 1027 Forty-third and a Half Avenue.
Thank you.
I am a landlord. I own two units in Columbia Heights, and I also own another unit in Blaine. So, I'm constantly at the tenants meeting, I'm in the landlord meeting, so I know what goes on here in Heights and what the problems are and what the issues are. The biggest problem I have is that we have a lot of problems with our rentals in Columbia Heights. I know that everybody here probably knows that. We really don't need any more rentals in this city at all, period. A decade ago, we were tearing down units, trying to get rid of them, trying to eliminate the problem, and here we want to expand and add more rental to the housing stock, and that doesn't make any sense to me. It's like, why do we spend all that money trying to tear this down and buy these places out when we're going to just add more units and more density and more problems? And on top of that, we're going to give TIF financing for it. So, it's like, we're going to give money away to get more problems down the road. And I have nothing against the developer. I'm sure their intentions are good, but someday, and if you look around all these other developments we've had in the past, they all started out with good intentions. "I'm going to be here, everything's going to be great, nothing's going to happen." Well, somewhere along the line, they don't own it anymore, and so it goes down the line, and then it becomes a big problem for the city. So, I would just like to state that we do not need any more rental property in this city. What we do need is less. What we need is more responsible landlords. What we need is better laws, better charter that allows the fire department, the police to do a better job. I mean, they're trying really hard. I know these people personally. But the laws are so weak in this city that as far as what we can do and what we can tell landlords to do and what they can't do, until we can get that fixed, I don't think we need to add any more housing to this city at all. And I think a lot of people feel the same way, and I think you're going to hear that. As far as this property is concerned, when it was originally developed, it was supposed to, I didn't, my understanding was never going to be rentals, townhomes and condos. Now, my understanding is they're allowed to rent the townhomes and condos, which I originally, originally thought they weren't, it was not allowed to do. So, that was another promise that was changed. So, we as citizens don't have a lot of faith in promises. We have a lot of faith in charters and laws and people who enforce them, but we don't have a lot of faith in promises. This is completely different. The first development was ownership. This is not ownership. This is rentals. And it's, I know it's not Section 8, but it still is subsidized housing of some type, which we don't need in this... Why here? Why not Woodbury? Why not Eden Prairie? Why Heights? Why Heights and Fridley? There's a reason for it, and this city will not change until we start to change the way we develop. If we want to change the city and we want to make it better, we have to change it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Kaiser.
Hello, my name is Tom Kaiser, and I live on 1140 Fiftieth Avenue, and I would like to speak in favor of this proposal. In a city with so many substandard rental properties, I see what Dominion is doing with other properties throughout the metro and the fact that they maintain ownership as the absolute antidote to a lot of the problems that we have in Columbia Heights. And as the city continues to become denser and grow as the rest of the area around us grows, I think that having such a high-quality development that's available to the income bracket that this is aimed at is a wonderful opportunity for the city. And as somebody who lives just barely in eyesight of the project, I would much rather see such a high-quality development from Dominion within walking distance to my home rather than maintaining its current status as a blighted lot that further degrades Central Avenue's appearance for people who live in the community and are just passing through. I also, through some of the work that I do in my job, I spend a lot of time looking at developments in competitive cities, for the Twin Cities throughout the rest of the country, and know that parking concerns, whether it's a commercial or a residential development, are a very hot issue in almost all cities. And the real trend in urban design is slightly ticking down the number of parking sites per unit based on, as the developer said, demographic trends and total vehicle miles driven by people, which has been declining. And as the Met Council looks for further transit-oriented, or I'm sorry, further transit investment with the bus line on Central, the appeal of this site for people who don't necessarily own two cars per adult, I think is a really wise investment for the future in Columbia Heights, and as somebody who lives nearby it, this is exactly what I'd like to see. And again, I'm familiar and spend time near some of Dominion's, Dominion's similar developments throughout the metro area, and they're beautifully maintained properties. They are, they are not in decline. They are not, they are not depreciating with time, and I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for our city to have something that's this high-quality, and the developer will maintain ownership of it. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Thomas Radio.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name is Thomas Radio. I'm an attorney with the Feldhauer and Larson Law Firm in downtown Minneapolis. I've been retained by the Association of the Condo Owners to represent them on this particular matter. I'm a certified specialist in real estate and in civil trial litigation. I've been practicing in land use and real estate and municipal law for thirty-five years. I've both represented property owners, government units, and as a city attorney for a couple of small cities. I spent numerous hours sitting at council table, listening to developers and applicants, and make promises which ultimately were never fulfilled. The developer here, Dominion, has basically said, trust us. We'll build a good project. We'll stand by it. We'll be here for, apparently forever. One of the maxims that came out of the nineteen eighties was trust but verify. Kind of hackneyed, kind of, you know, trite, but it truly is. And my life as a lawyer is basically saying, what's the worst thing that could happen? And how can I protect my clients from that eventuality? In this situation, I represent homeowners who have made an investment, probably their largest investment of their entire life, and that investment is at jeopardy. Now, Dominion is not guaranteeing that this project will succeed. They say, trust us, look at our past performance. The problem with that is no one knows the future. You could list any number of corporations, companies, that have gone out of business in the past five years, ten years. There is no guarantee in the future. But what property owners rely upon for some guarantee of the protection of their investment is the sanctity of law, the zoning code. It should be the same for everybody. And one of the things that I looked at when I read the staff report was this notion of waiver, that the city council, based upon either with or without your recognition, could waive certain requirements. Where's the predictability there? Where is the reliability there? We are a nation of laws, not a people, of corporations. And we have to be able to rely upon you as public officials to enforce those laws, protect property rights. That's really what I'm here asking you to do, is protect those property rights. On the key provisions here of density and parking and then the more minor one regarding, uh, the driveways, this is the wrong development, the wrong place at the wrong time. It is too dense. It is asking too many people to live in too small of a space. That violates your zoning code. Now Dominion, through the representatives, basically, trust us. We have, we've looked at this at other places and we think you need, don't need as much parking. No one elected Dominion to make that decision. They elected the city council. The city council appointed you to make this determination, but to use the city code as your guide, not to make it up as one applicant comes forward with their numbers, another applicant comes forward with their numbers. That's not how American law works. That's not how city government works. In a pure, in its pure form, this is a government where the citizens rely upon the elected and appointed officials to enforce the laws fairly and uniformly. And this, in this particular instance, the staff has given you a report which basically says they don't meet the requirements and that failure to meet those requirements has an adverse impact on the neighbors, on their property rights. This commission and the city council is the bastion, is the protection of property rights. And that my clients are asking you to enforce your code as it is written, not as Dominion thinks it should be written, but as it is written for the protection of its citizens. The staff has given you clear calculations. I don't understand Mr. Metz's new kind of math on some of these calculations, but it is clear that on the density, ninety-eight point eight units are allowed under your code, they're asked, they're asking for a hundred and seventy-two units. That exceeds it by seventy-five percent. They're asking for seventy-three point six more units. Even if you were to increase it by this fifty percent, they're still over that number. They didn't even try to hit the increased number. They're still over that number. In terms of the parking, the same type of exceeding number was, is being proposed. They're still exceeding the higher limit. And Mr. Metz said, well, we're within twelve. That's close enough. And if you want us, we'll do twelve. Why didn't they do twelve at, to meet that standard right there? And if it's at one o'clock in the morning and there's not enough parking spots around and you have to walk three blocks with groceries in the freezing cold because they underparked this lot, who are they to complain to, to, at that point? That's why these codes are written, to protect the property interests and the livability of these, these properties. And the problem with this particular proposal, it is tempting to put too many people onto this location. Historically, when the people bought into the first building, they were intended at a certain level, it was supposed to be owner-occupied and a certain level of density. Now, the developer is basically saying, we're gonna change those recommendations, we're gonna change those expectations without any concern for the impact on your property values and the usability of your property. So those homeowners are counting upon you as the advisory body to the city council and the city council to say, no, they bought with certain expectations and part of those expectations not were, not just the representations of the developer, but also what was written into the city code. And to change that now merely because to make this project feasible is unfair to them. Your role is not to make the project feasible. Your role is to enforce the code in a fair, reasonable manner. Staff has given you their recommendation. Basically, you either table this to give them a chance to come within the code provisions or you deny it. They are not recommending approval. And on behalf of my clients, we would ask you to seriously consider and to deny this particular proposal because it doesn't meet your code and has a severe adverse impact on the citizens of this whole community, but most in particular, the sit nearby citizens. What's really is happening is they're trying to put rental units next to owner-occupied units. Now, you know, if they're across the street, that's one thing, but you're really putting it on the same site. The expectations were of my clients when they first bought it was owner-occupied, that doesn't create certain problems. And there's gonna be shared expenses. There's gonna be two more buildings to share the overall fixed expenses. Those expenses are not being shared. Dominion is not offering to share any of those. So those expectations are not being met by the developer. At least the city should enforce its code so that the expectations of the citizens in their city government to protect their property rights can be satisfied. I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of my clients, but I also wanna reserve time so they, the citizens, can be heard by yourselves. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is Paul Biernet.
Good evening. Paul Biernet, ten seventy Grand View Court, number three oh six. Um, I think a lot of things have been beaten about the parking and everything else. Um, great presentation, um, by Dominion, but again, I would say as if transit is increasing and people are not needing cars. If anyone has to drive at rush hour in the twin cities, look at what's happened over the last four years. Traffic's getting worse, not less. So I think that kind of, um, brings up a little bit of, you know, there's two sides to the story. Um, also, they alluded to crime and, and I don't wanna get into that too much, but, you know, I mean, people that are gonna commit crime don't necessarily sign a document that they're not gonna commit crime. So, um, you know, I think, I think we have to be realistic about, you know, how honest people are that, that, uh, that are gonna do that. Um, the, affordable housing came up and, and condos are a very affordable way for homeownership. You share in costs with people in your building and your community and it allows, you know, people to get in at a lower price point and live the American dream and build personal wealth. And, you know, that was what was intended here. It was advertised. The city, uh, people on the planning commission and the city council back then supported it. If you look back in the two thousand nine and ten, uh, economic development meeting minutes, uh, it alludes to that. And everything, even in Dominion's proposal, alludes to that there was supposed to be two condo buildings there and it's like a planned unit development. And add a hundred and twenty, about more units. And, you know, what they're proposing is, you know, I think everybody understands it doesn't fit. There's, there's really only a couple of things I wanna focus on. It's on page eleven of their proposal. Um, they're asking about an easement variance, uh, or waiver. And if you look in there, um, associations are created and there's rules homeowners have to follow and people that are doing work in the, the neighborhood or the community have to follow. And it, and it's basically stating that, you know, if something's gonna change with the bylaws or, um, easements, things like that, it has to be approved by sixty-seven percent of homeowners. And it also notes, Dominion is noting that the mortgage holders would also have to approve. Well, why would that be? Well, that's to protect homeowners' values. It's to protect bank interests, um, and values. And if you were to give that, you know, waiver on the variances, why would Dominion have to negotiate with the associations or have any type of agreement? Um, we don't have any type of official agreement yet. They could've came and negotiated and tried to hammer out some agreement. It didn't happen because they're hoping that you do it for them. And then they can basically, sorry, you know, they, they threw that away. Um, we've, we've been through litigation in our associations and one thing, we haven't found a judge yet that will waive association documents and say, no, don't worry, you don't have to follow that. That seems kinda hokey. So if they're not willing to do that, I'd ask, why would you guys wanna do that? And, you know, again, it generally, it's gonna increase taxes in Columbia Heights and all that money's gonna go into the pockets of Dominion for at least fourteen years or whatever. Then I'm sure they'll sell and lock away and the next person will come in and, you know, we'll have the issues that everyone is, is, uh, basically stating. So, um, again, there's, I, I mean, if you go through this thing, you can highlight all sorts of things. Some of the comparisons, if anyone's been out in Brooklyn Park and you go by six ten West, that was put in the middle of a farm field next to Target's North Campus and behind a Cub Foods. You know, they've got all kinds of room around there. So they've got all kinds of parking. They've got all kinds of access to the freeway. It's not the same. We've got, if you really look at the site where the old Kmart was, it's tucked in there. It was designed a specific way. It was laid out beautifully. Um, I, you know, the, the worst thing to do is, you know, when somebody plans something out and designs it, it's kinda like an artist. The worst thing to do is go in and redo something of their work because it was intended for a certain purpose and that's, you know, the best use of it. So I just ask you to stick with the plan. We have a person here that is actually a condo developer. Um, it, you know, I know those fell out of favor, but everything's, you know, goes in cycles and that's most likely gonna come back and it provides the city with the best use of affordable housing and ownership so people can have a piece of the American dream. So that's all I ask. Thanks.
Thank you.
Roger Johnson.
Hi, my name is Roger Johnson and, uh, uh, I'm actually from Florida and I decided to buy a condo up here. And, uh, I have a friend that knew where ten seventy Grand View was. And, uh, I thought it was a pretty good deal, so I bought it. And then I found out that, uh, Dominion is going to build a two-hundred-unit apartment house next door. Now, I mean, I'm not real smart, but I mean, they have three apartment houses on, uh, corner of Forty-second. They have, uh, two big apartments across Central Avenue. I, I really don't think we need another apartment building. Plus the traffic congestion and, I mean, it'd, it'd be a total mess. So, uh, I, I think the, the value in, uh, uh, my unit would drop to, to nothing. I'd lose just about everything. And, uh, that isn't what I wanted. You know, I, I, I wanted a place where I could, uh, live in, in the, in the summertime and, uh, and it would be okay. And then I find out about this thing, which is crazy. So, uh, you know, I don't know what you folks think, but, uh, boy, if you, if you vote for this, I don't know what. I guess that's all I have to say. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I might pronounce this last name incorrectly. If I do, I apologize. Jan Swankowski?
Swentkowsky.
Swentkowsky.
Good evening. I'm Jan Swankowski. I live at ten, ten seventy Grand View Court. I moved here three years ago when my husband passed away. I found the condo and I loved it. To me, it felt like home. And I have found that the people in my unit, my building, are awesome. I mean, we work together, we do things together, we have fun. And all of a sudden, when I, when I purchased my unit, I was told there will be two other condos. We're phase one, there'll be phase two and phase three, single-family home. Now, all of a sudden, we get hit with, oh, we're gonna build this huge apartment complex. That wasn't what we were told. That isn't what I spent my hard-earned money for. I purchased my home where I live. And I'm not happy with it and I'll be the first to admit it. And every issue that the attorney has said, Paul has said, Roger has said, is true. This isn't what we want. And I would ask each and every one of you, if that complex was coming to be built in your backyard, would you be happy? Would you accept it? We don't want it. We're not saying we don't want anything. That isn't what we were offered. That isn't what we bought into. So again, I present it to you, each and every one of you. If this was in your backyard, would you be willing to change the law for that? Thank you very much.
Kevin Lovegren.
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Kevin Lovegren. I reside at ten seventy Grand View Court, apartment four oh two. I have lived there for the last seven years. A lot of you may know me. I owned Sarah Jane's Bakery on Twenty-ninth and Johnson in northeast Minneapolis for over forty years. I retired in February of two thousand sixteen. Um, I love the city of Columbia Heights. It's a great city. It's very diverse. We have so many good people in this city. Um, I've lost forty pounds since May fifteenth. I walk around this community. I walk. I walk between four and five miles, four days a week. I meet the people in the city, and I talk to them. There's some great people in this city. My major concern with this development is the traffic. We've got two roads that feed to Central Avenue, 47th and 49th. 49th is a main feeder to Columbia High School. In the mornings, we have, during school, we have many children that are walking to school that come up that road. And people come out on Grand to 49th, and there is a wait now to try and make a left turn onto 49th to get to Central, to get to the freeways. My main concern is if this project goes through, you're going to have to put a light at that intersection. There's just absolutely no way that anybody's going to be able to get through there. You're going to have accidents, you're going to have kids getting hit, you're going to have all kinds of situations in that particular thing. There'll just be too many cars. Right now, there's a lot of cars that are using, use that Grand Avenue as a cut-through between 47th and 49th. And if you think that they go slow, sir, they don't go slow. They drive pretty fast through that particular road, and that road is not very wide. So, you know, I love my condo, I love the people that live in it, and I will reiterate what somebody already said. When I bought, it was supposed to be a development of condos. Now, I understand that this is an empty lot, and it's sitting empty, and something needs to be done with it. I understand that. I get that. It's on, it's sitting there empty, and nothing's happening. You know, there's a lot of people in here that aren't going to be happy with what I have to say, but I think that if Dominion wants to build one building, put one building on that site, and put it up, and if, if that's what they want to do, one building, and make a park for the kids with the rest of the property, I'd be for that. You know, I mean, one building, 80 units, there's probably enough room for that many parking spots, and for that, that amount of people to live there, and build a park for the kids. Do something for the kids of this community. It's not about me, it's not about you, it's about the children that live in this community. And we have to keep them safe. If you put all those cars onto 49th and Grand, phew, boy, there's going to be a lot of kids that are put at danger without a stoplight. So that's what I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks.
KT Jacobs?
My name is KT Jacobs. I reside at 4104 Monroe Street, and have been a resident of Columbia Heights since I guess one of the first questions I would ask all of you this evening is, what is the ratio between owner-occupied units in the city versus renter-occupied units in the city?
I don't have it in front of me, but there, there is a, a thing that, that tells us that. Do you know what it is offhand, Joe? We talked about it at EDA not that long, long ago.
We did. Looking at Keys, I, I know he knows.
At the EDA meeting, we were only discussing single-family homes. We weren't looking at duplexes.
I would be happy with that. I would be happy with knowing.
No, no, no. We were talking about what the ratio was.
What's the ratio between renter-occupied units and, and owner-occupied units? Whether it be a condo or a freestanding, a single-family unit? Do we not, I, to me, that's one of the things that should be right in front of you as a group of commissioners, that that's something that, that should, is relevant in what's going on here.
Well, a lot of, a lot of the rental you don't see, because it's, it's happening in single-family homes now. Not just, not just rental buildings, apartment buildings.
I agree.
So I think that, if you're asking the question, if I remember correctly, the number of rentals is high.
Very high.
Very high.
A little bit of research, my point.
But the ratio, I'm not sure of what it is, because I don't have that in front of me.
The, the little bit of, of research I was able to do this afternoon, and I, I printed all of this out from the city site, and I went through it page for page. And 2014 numbers, and I know that these are not accurate, 2014 numbers, the number of renters in, in Columbia Heights was 38%, and the state average was 29%. And we can all pretty much guess that it's probably a lot worse than that now. Okay?
I agree.
Moving on, I think for Dominion to compare things that were approved 13 years ago is almost insulting to us as citizens. We've moved, 13 years, there's a lot of change taking place. And I think it is appalling that they stand before the citizens, the, the community immediately affected, which is the condominiums at Grand, and, and the community as a whole, and they stand before us and stand before you, ladies and gentlemen, this evening, and tell us that they want almost double the amount of units per acre, and half of what the zoning requires for covered parking. So they want double the units, and they want to get away with half of what those units would require in covered parking spaces. How about some workability on the side of Dominion? I think these are the things that need to be considered. I don't like that barren lot. Something needs to be done with it. We all know that. I'm not going to be redundant and, and talk about it. There's a lot of room for improvement in this site proposal that they've come forward with, and the things that, that the City Council can do in controlling the issues that arise from rental. Thank you.
My name is John Bush, and I am one of the condo owners at the, at 1070 Grand View. I own the little corner on the left-hand side. We, we had purchased a home in Ramsey, so I'm stuck with a condo. I love my condo. I haven't rented it out. I'd like to keep it, because one day I won't be able to go up and down stairs. And, but it was too small. It was 1,350 square feet. I don't know how you squeeze people into 750 square feet. That seems incredible. But the thing I thought amazing about this whole project is the audacity of coming and saying, all we want to do is increase the density by 74%. That's all we want. Just imagine if I went to my boss and said, I just want a 74% increase in my salary. I'd be kicked in you-know-what, wouldn't I? I mean, it's, it's, it's rather arrogant, and I don't understand it. We're told that that's the only way they can make it work. It's sort of like the guy, I've got my condo for sale, and he said, I'll give you $135,000 cash for it. It's been on sale for about six months now. That's about half the value. Maybe a little less, a little more than half the value. What we got here is a desperation. They found this little place in the, in the city, and, and they want to squeeze in there this huge complex, and they don't want to abide by any of our rules and guidelines. We don't know nothing. Our city doesn't know anything. It's a new mega-density. It's the end thing, folks. Mega-density. Parking, oh, people don't use cars. Did you drive here today and notice the neighborhood? There were cars parked on the street, several in each driveway, most of the homes. People do still have cars. I'll take a bus ride to the fair because of the traffic, but normally I use my car. I drove it 18,000 miles last year. And I'm, I'm retired. Come on. This is not realistic. The density is way overboard. If it was, I like the buildings, how they design them. I think that part is fine. I like the idea of offering homes for those that need it, there are working people. But I think they've overdeveloped the site. We have one way in, even though they're dividing it by providing another driveway, we have one way in, and it's 20 feet. They want to ask you to waive that requirement, and, and let them do the same thing again. The requirement is wider than the 20 feet. If you notice, our building, in the dark picture here, our building has enough parking places for every unit. I think there's eight for the penthouses. Then the one-bedroom units have one, and the two-bedroom units are required to have two. And that is included in the entire building. The outside parking is for our guests. When there's a birthday party, when there's an event, we have guests that come in. Lo and behold, we have friends. Most people have friends. And if, if they're coming for dinner at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock, they're probably not riding a bus across town. They're probably driving a car, and they're going to need to get there and park someplace. This inadequate parking is what I'm trying to say. And those are the other, other variables. I don't want to take all of your time, the time that others would like to use sharing, but the other thing that irked me was charging $75 for the parking. And if we're looking at people that are on the, just entry-level, working-class people, that puts a stigma on it. They won't want to pay that. They'll want to economize. And the end result was, will be that that won't be used, they'll be out on the street. So parking and density are my big concerns. I'm not concerned about the building itself. I could live with it if they bring it down to size. And they would have parking underground for the number of units that would be allowed. And I think that if they modeled what we've done with around 60 in each building, 120 units, be closer to something that would be worth considering. But as I put it now, it's way out of proportion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave Meyer?
My name is Dave Meyer. I live at 4218 Second Street. And I was a firefighter for your city for years, and retired. And, you know, we fought hard up in that area to try to get it cleaned up. I think we all know that, that one time, that was not the best area, there's parts of it that probably aren't. My fear here is that eventually, what do you, what do you do if you don't fill those buildings? At some point, they're going to want to fill them. They're not going to want to leave those areas empty. And I look at something like was put in behind the park down here, those were sold as owner areas, and you've got rental in part of those already. And the density, like other people have said, the density for that area, I just, I just don't see how you can make it work. I don't, I don't pay any attention to something that's called transit's helpful. I don't think that has anything to do with who's going to live there. I'm not saying there won't be people that will take the bus, but the idea that that's really going to be a selling point on a single bus stop, I'm just not buying it. I feel for the people that paid the big money up there originally, and it surprises me to hear how even now, there be, the people that might be interested in buying are being told that two condos are going up, when in reality, I don't consider this a condo. I'm sorry, I don't. And I don't like the idea of leaving that space open any more than the rest of these people, but I just think, I just think the city needs to look at what they're trying to do here, and just realize, it just doesn't fit. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anne Buttig?
My name is Anne Buttig, and I live at 1070 Grand View Court, in the condos there. Basically, everything I had written in my little notes on my phone, because I didn't bring a pen, has already been spoken. We talked about investment. I bought my condo as my first-time homeowner, just a little over two years ago, and that concerns me. As a single person, trying to make this life work for me, my investment is everything I have in that, in that condo right now, and that, and that matters to me. And so, and the other things about the density, and this, and everything has already been spoken, so I don't want to beat a dead horse. But I, I also wanted to make sure that my two cents was input here today, at today's meeting, and I think it has been by my fellow condo owners already, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara Kurak?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I appreciate your time. I'm with Anne. Everything's been kind of beaten. The one thing that I do want to.
Ma'am, where do you live?
Oh, I'm sorry, I live in, in the lofts. I actually live on the backside that's going to be facing these new buildings. It's a concern for me, the density, that many people in the backyard, et cetera. However, my, my one point that I do want to impress upon you, and not to reiterate what everybody else is saying, is that those of us that live in the condos don't want to limit housing opportunities. We want to create housing opportunities that fit into the community, the way it was developed, the way the cottages came in, and fit into our community, and became part of our community, and didn't overdensify that space. It's very scary to think about that many people in that small amount of space. If you, if you come down there and sit down there, I would welcome you, any of you, to sit on my patio for an entire day, and watch what goes on around down there. It's crazy. With all due respect, I appreciate your time, and I, as a person that lives there, would appease upon you to vote against this development the way it sits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tom Kurak?
City Council people, city staff, Planning and Zoning Commissioner, I'm Tom Kurak. I own Unit 406 in the, in the Grand Central Lofts, and I'd like to leave this letter for the minutes. I dictated it this morning, and I'll, I'd like to read it. Imagine this moment for right now. We, and I like you, and we respect your job. Please recognize that we bought our homes and have lived 10 years, 10 years through tough times, like everybody else in America. We have in our planned enclave, closed in by three walls on six acres, a planned grouping of three condo buildings. We have the first building. All through the real estate downturn, I'm on the board of that building, we have been planning on how we will welcome over 200-plus new neighbors when they move into their new condos, when they're built eventually. We have been planning, our board, that is, on a beautiful neighborhood of people enjoying their homes, and building a community that works together. We would then be able to gain amenities, like owning an affordable home, by sharing expenses of maintenance of the gracious amount of open space that was planned. Now, this space I'm speaking of was promised to all of us, including all of our neighbors, back when the building permits were granted for approximately 180 condo units. 60 per building on the six-acre neighborhood, and the little green patch of Columbia Heights that we, as a family, maintained for 10 years, waiting and planning for welcoming our new that we as a family maintained for 10 years, waiting and planning for welcoming our new homeowners neighbors. During that time, congealing our family, working through property owning maintenance issues which came up when people with divergent past lives and lifestyles come together. Some of our family are young, some are old. Some of our family have made relationships with all of us and then moved on in different ways or passed away. We miss them all and respect their lives. So life goes on in our little neighborhood, on the land that was waiting for the condo buildings and our new neighbors. My friends and I hope that it will remain a home ownership opportunity as it was originally planned. The four acres inside our community is not too much land to reserve for home ownership. Thank you. And I'd like it put in the minutes.
Dan Thomason, Thompson, excuse me.
Good evening. I'm Dan Thompson. I'm pastor of Heights Church here in Columbia Heights. There are a lot of other people that, that I see here that I wish they had spoken before I did. I, I am here to speak in favor of this particular development. When it comes to the, some of the topics that I've heard tonight and how they are treated in language, I want to say first of all, that renter does not equal problem. We live in a new economy. We live in a new era where people think differently. And, and so there are, there are balances, but there are just ways that we create stigma just by the language that we use. And density of housing on a transportation line is an opportunity for something good to happen. People who are getting into opportunities of coming out of college or getting into the workforce or just finding places where they can work good jobs that on, in our economy, wages have not gone up, they need an affordable place to live. And they need the opportunity to make their way in this life. From where this place is located, we also have the opportunity where a lot of kids can walk to our schools. And we have the opportunity to increase our good work base in our city. We have the opportunity for Hy-Vee to come in and we have an opportunity for some Hy-Vee employees to live in good play, in good spaces. We have a developer that is willing to build a quality product tying in to the existing buildings to bring a great finish to that particular area. And they are putting in amenities where they own this and they have the track record to prove it. You can't predict the future, but you can look at prior performance. They're creating a safe area, a secure area, one that is highly monitored and for the price that people are getting, they are getting a higher value for, for less money to be able to be in a quality place that will allow them to make their way into this life, into life. I would like to appeal all the time to the better angels of our nature and to have the opportunity to give working people the opportunity, not just to have a place to live, but a place to live well. And Columbia Heights gets to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Sean Broom?
My name is Sean Broom. My address is 4117 Fifth Street Northeast. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, thank you guys very much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. There's been a lot of stuff that's been brought in front of you guys tonight, and I think it's important at first to strip away some of the things that don't really focus on what's in front of you as members of the Planning Commission. The most important parts of the question you guys face are, is this in line with our comprehensive plan? And as Elizabeth reported earlier, yes, it is ultimately in line with our comprehensive plan. Is this in line with precedent? And as you look at the existing documents, the planned, you know, previous development, it is largely in line with precedent. It is seeking a little bit more density and it is seeking density ultimately to try to facilitate this development in the first place. Dominion says, and I trust them, as I'm not a real estate professional, that they need to get this density in to make the numbers work for them. And there, there's a certain amount of discretion we should give somebody who's willing to spend millions of dollars investing in our community. So the most important questions that are in front of you are, does this align with the comp plan? And it does. And is this in line with precedent? And with a few exceptions, it is. Those questions are, should you accept those exceptions? But, so if you step back for a second, and there's been a lot of talk about affordability, there's been some talk about TIF, I don't know if, if there's been a good use of those. So strip all of that stuff away and instead just imagine that this development is being proposed to you as a apartment development in Columbia Heights with a higher level of amenities than any other facility in the, in the city, with one bedroom rents at $940 a month. I am not too proud to acknowledge it, that's higher than my mortgage, right? We are talking about an apartment development that is more expensive than the average mortgage in the city of Columbia Heights, I would venture to guess. So when we, if you step back and think of it that way, this is ultimately just a new market setting apartment building in the city of Columbia Heights and arguably the nicest development that has been proposed in Columbia Heights in decades. There was a comment earlier that we need to change the way Columbia Heights does development, and I absolutely agree with that. And the first thing that we need to do to change the way Columbia Heights does development is agree to development. Three years ago, I came to a similar Planning and Zoning Committee to address a vacant lot across Housit Park and it was denied then for density issues, for parking issues, for a lot of the same reasons about the people who were perceived to live there. And it's unfortunate that a piece of property can't be a city employee, because since that parcel was denied, since that development was denied, that parcel has served as an amazing garbage collector and it should be rewarded for that. So as we look at this opportunity, we have again the chance to say, yes, we want you to come spend money in Columbia Heights, or yet again, no, we will find reasons to say, we don't want your investment. We don't want your development. There have been calls for you guys to declare that this has to be home ownership, that this should be an ownership oriented use. It's not the place of the city to dictate ownership versus rental use. That's the market. It is, it is the responsibility of the market to dictate the uses of the land. Who are you as city members to say the private ownership or what the private ownership should, how they should dispense of a piece of property? It's no more fair to say to this developer, this must be home ownership than it is to say to a condo owner, you are not allowed to rent out your property. It is private property and the people who own it have the rights to use it as they, they see fit. The attorney for the, for the condo association had made comments about things change. And it's true, things do change. The members of this condo association were sold a false bill of goods. The original developer gave them false pretenses to buy this and then was unable to follow through with that. That is unfortunate, but it is their problem. It is between them and their original developer and that's who they need to settle that with. Not come to the city government to dictate that you infringe on others' private property There was, there's been a lot of talk about parking, about the way that people live these days, from people who don't necessarily reflect new homeowners, new apartment, you know, renters in the city of Columbia Heights. And the folks who are in front of you, again, offering to invest millions of dollars in our community, have enough of, of experience in this, that when they come to you and say, we really think that there's about one and a half units per this, again, they have enough experience to know what they're looking for. By demanding more parking from them, you're simply giving them more dead cost. You're going to make their project more expensive for asphalt, not for places for people to live, not for places for people to enjoy Columbia Heights, but for asphalt. They have a reasonable proposition. They have come in and asked for development in Columbia Heights. We have already established what Columbia Heights' development kind of outlook is and is reflected in that empty lot across the park. Don't let this be another empty lot for another decade.
Dega Shabella?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Dega Shabell, 3827 Beckham Boulevard. I have to say that tonight I'm a bit shocked about a lot of things. It seems like my generation is not linked with this generation talking tonight. Reason being is before I bought my beautiful house here in Columbia Heights, I lived in an apartment and I rented that apartment with my two little children. And I did that because, you know what, my parents are not multimillionaires and I didn't have a house in which I grew up because I'm an immigrant. So it's kind of, you know, like, okay, I understand, maybe you had your home and you grew up with your parents and then later on, when you saved enough money, you bought your own home. But there are some people like me, you had to live in very crummy, ugly apartments to save, to buy the beautiful house that I own today. Now, my niece is expecting and I'm so happy that she moved from Las Vegas to Columbia Heights to be closer to her family. She has been with us for the past six months and she could not find an apartment that appeases her in the city that I love and I would die for. And it shocks me. Every apartment that we go to are either too old, too crummy, not enough things that we need. There is not central air, there is no amenities that today the younger generation needs. And this development, I kept on telling her, you, you know what, you could stay with me, okay? I could give you a room, you could have your husband live somewhere else until, and until these apartments are built. Because you know what, the two bedroom, I think you guys could afford. And they don't have a car and they will never buy a car because they know how much it costs for insurance. And just like me, back in the days, they want to save so they could have their own home one day. So what I'm trying to say right here is, I understand, I'm a homeowner and I understand that sometimes you're afraid of rentals and maybe the value of your home could decrease. But where I live, there is a senior building being built, okay? Not exactly what I wanted, but I said, you know what, if the city of Columbia Heights or the people that are coming to invest in this city that really needs development came and decided that this is the right spot to have our senior citizens affordable living, I'm okay with it. I didn't worry about bedbugs. I didn't worry about criminals, because to be honest, it's not only the younger generation that are criminals. You have a lot of older people who have done bad things in the days. I didn't worry about those things. I didn't worry if my value of my home is going to decrease. I thought about this person that maybe worked for so many years and because of this awful economy going on, maybe lost their job, might not have medical assistance, needs to live in a house that's affordable for them, that is beautiful, that they could get the amenities that they need and right close to me, which is great. I hope that the condo owners on the other side change to that positive note. It might not feel that way right now, but not everybody who rents is a criminal and not everybody who rents-
I don't think anyone said that, ma'am. Not, no one has said things like that.
I've never, I've never interrupted anyone and I think it's quite rude that I'm being interrupted right now. So, Madam Chair, if you could restrain the people to interrupt me, I would truly appreciate it. Nevertheless, my thoughts on this is Heights is no longer the city that it used to be because we are changing. The city is changing. The people are changing and we need to go with the comprehensive plan, which is, we are going forward, we are going towards the future. Not everybody is going to own a home in 10, 20 years. My nephew, he is graduating from university. He told me point blank, he will never own a home. And I kept on showing him that it's cheaper to own a home than to rent. And although he sees it, he prefers renting because he's like, well, I don't want to mow the lawn and I don't want to be with the neighbors that I really don't like, so if I don't like you, I move. Hopefully, in the next 10 years, he'll change, I'm hoping. But those are the kind of apartments that he needs. It's a safe environment, it is beautiful. I thank the developers for thinking of our city, because honestly, if I was a developer and I drove through our city, I wouldn't want to, because it does not look good and it is not a beautiful city. So let's make it beautiful and please do approve of this. Thank you.
Dina Degrode?
So I live at 4426 Seventh Street Northeast and I've only lived there for a year, but I live in a house that was a farmhouse built in 1917. So evidently, it is true that this city has experienced a lot of change and I think we're trying to catch up. I read the comprehensive plan and to quote, "The comprehensive plan has the power to influence the zoning code and improve the land uses to fit the community's changing needs." And it is this change from farm community to suburb to now urban that we are grappling with. There are also other changes that have really impacted. That one of them is, I'm a financial advisor, my clients 15 years ago said, well, I want to put lots of money in land and in my house because it can never go down in value. I bet some of you remember 2008 and you owners possibly remember that your home may have changed in value. There's a trend going on that is somewhat related to the fact that home ownership is no longer considered the, the one, the end all. There's a trend going on that renting is actually a good thing. Snowbirds, millennials who have a lot of student debt and are trying to clean that up, people who like to change where they live often, single parents who, people who can't qualify for a mortgage or just don't want to. Renter, renting is kind of a trend and it's one that we're trying to, to catch up with. But the people who farmed in my house in 1917 would have not ever seen that we would be looking at urban trends in this city. I like the way this place looks. I consider Columbia Heights sort of an attachment to the city. You go five, you go up and down university, there are beautiful rentals for people of lots of ages being constructed, hundreds of them in Fridley and then all of the senior rentals. I'm not sure why this one is creating such a stir and the senior rentals did not. I'm not sure about that, but I probably just don't, am not aware. I wonder what we'd rather have on that site. It sounds, I hear less cars, less density, more ownership. And the, the more ownership thing, I'm confused about, very confused about. And the other things, I think that there's some compromise that probably needs to occur and it's back to the drawing board because after tonight, I'm sure the waters are muddier and muddier, not clearer and clearer. So I hope that you can work out the parking, work out the density. I don't want another fast food place there because we won't have anybody who can afford to live close by and work there. I would love to have some, some beautiful rentals in this city that I recently moved to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Elizabeth Herman?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Herman, 950, 39th Avenue Northeast, Apartment 6. Boo, one of the worst apartment buildings perhaps in the area. Anyways, I welcome this addition. I don't know that it is affordable. I don't know that it is affordable, but along with other development of retail and perhaps light industry or whatever, I believe that it is steps forward to the positive growth of Columbia Heights. When I initially moved up here, they actually put me as a Minneapolis on my zip code because we are just that little finger into Hennepin County and we have the great changes, shall we say, in northeast Minneapolis and Columbia Heights is just the next step. We have recent folks who have moved and we have folks that have lived here a long time. Well, these folks are thinking this thing is crazy and, you know, their fear of renters and it's scary to think that this might happen, et cetera, et cetera. I ride the bus, there's nothing wrong with it. I've actually encouraged 10 increase service and the transit station. I know a lot of folks oppose it. I am sort of disappointed that you guys don't realize the impact that renters have and you are unaware of how much renting is going on. I know of a fellow that owns two homes. I wanted to get out of my apartment building. He owns one on Reservoir and he owns a little bit bigger one and he's not the only one that was fortunate enough to be of a mature and advantageous market prior to the 2007, 2008 crash, which is where I lost my house. And he rents the other one. I know that your code needs to be stronger and that's to protect the tenants and to protect the neighborhoods as well as the fire department and the general safety of the community, which you are here as elected representatives to, to protect. You need to believe that the rental market is not as obvious and that those folks like Cliff that are in the business, that are lamenting the fact that we are going to have another rental unit, he's obviously making money and I'm glad that he occupied, or excuse me, lives and resides, but I'm just saying that not everything is owner-occupied and not all landlords are here. We have a lot of absentee landlords. I believe the Dominion are going to be around for a while. I don't know what happened with the condos, but obviously some of them are rentals. One gentleman says it's, you know, Apartment 402. That seems more like a rental than an ownership. I understand ownership, I understand rental. A lot of the things have been said before, but I do believe that we need less automobiles, we have to develop the pedestrian ways, we need to promote safe biking, and I don't know what else you want either. If you have a bunch of folks that are able to pay those rents, then they will be able to patronize the establishments and encourage the vitality of the overall community. And maybe we won't need all those auto-related businesses on Central, but we could get some more dynamic small businesses and entrepreneurs of diverse background that will be the new, welcome to the 21st century, Columbia Heights.
Thank you.
Phil Benning, Ben Mia? Sorry.
Phil Bomea, 3800 American Boulevard West, Unit Number 1500 in Bloomington, Minnesota. I'm actually a real estate broker for Executive Realty. I manage and buy and sell homes in this area quite often. I guess I do have a question. Initially, maybe I missed it, so I apologize, but how long does the affordable housing, how long do they have to follow that? Is it, does it coincide with the tax or no? Or is it indefinite?
You mean, how long do they have to stick to the rental amounts that they, that they have?
Correct.
I don't know that. I would imagine forever.
Is it indefinite, is it not?
Indefinitely, they may end up having to raise them at some point.
Madam Chair, I do have the answer.
Thank you.
It's tied to the tax-exempt bonds that the city has already approved for this project. It would be through the Minnesota Management and Budget Department of the state and it would be for 15 years.
So 15 years, after 15 years, they no longer have to abide by the affordable housing?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Okay. I guess two points I want to point out. First of all, I know that, that we were talking about the markets going up and Owen mentioned something about, you know, since they've been building in, in the areas that they've bought in, a couple of the condo lots that they bought were failed attempts and I, and hence, they, they built their buildings and then, and then the real estate around them continued to rise. I wouldn't necessarily, I don't, I don't know if it was an assumption or not, but I wouldn't necessarily say that that was a, an outcome of what they did, more as it was just the market doing what it was doing and that, and they bought at a good time and the market was going up and the real estate around them and even the condos around them went up. So I wouldn't necessarily credit that all to Dominion. As far as the, the affordability of the units themselves, like I said, I'm a real estate broker. The price per square foot at 750 square feet for a one-bedroom at $940 a month, not including a parking stall, is at about 133, 100, or I'm sorry, $1.30 a square foot. Okay, so that's a 750 square foot apartment. It's a one-bedroom, no underground parking. At that, at the current market where we're at right now, if someone was to buy a condo in this market at, let's say, $140 a square foot, at the same square footage at 100, at 750 square feet, you'd be all-in with taxes, insurance, PMI for, let's say, an FHA buyer at 3%. We'd be looking at a purchase price at about $105,000. Okay, so monthly payment on that would be roughly $722 a month, plus an association due. Okay, so on a one-bedroom apartment, your association dues is maybe $200. So now we're looking at $922 for someone to buy the same, same unit, same exact unit and the affordability of it is actually less buying it than it is renting it. And again, I own a property management company, I do this all the time. The, and this affordability, it, it's great, it's great, but they only have to do it for a certain amount of time. So all of these, all these comments that, that this will forever be affordable isn't necessarily true. Yes, it will be affordable and it's going to be, it'll be a beautiful building, correct? I, I don't disagree with it and I like what they've done. But at the same time, with the same, same unit, you could buy it for less than what this affordability of, of renting it would be. I, I, again, I agree with the density is, is too strong. I've, I know that, that every time I've gone to this, to this site, I know it's an empty site, but, but it's not being, it's not being paid on, on their taxes. They're, they're paid, correct? I believe they are. So the current, they're paid, it's not being, it's not decrepit, it's being mowed, it's being taken care of. I feel like there's a lot of, of people who are saying that we need to do something and we need to do it now. And that, and yes, I, I agree, something does need to be done. I just don't think this is the right fit. I think the original plans, the original concept for the condos, for the whole condo was, it was agreed, it was, it was something that everybody went through, the parking was there and it was all covered, the additional spots were for guests outside. And, and it fit, and it fit. And with these other buildings coming in with the Hy-Vee, the Starbucks, the affordability of even the condos that are, that would be built, would still be affordable. And I don't think that just throwing in an apartment complex just because we have to do something, we have to do something now, I don't think it's the right fit. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Denise Kendrick-Stevens and I live at 4844 Grandview Court, which is the northeasternmost corner of the development in one of the cottages. I'll make this really quick. A couple of things that have been brought up tonight, I just want to say, nobody is concerned about what Dominion's properties look like. We've all seen them, they're beautiful. That's not the issue. And nobody is saying that all renters are criminals. We've probably, all of us that are homeowners probably have been renters at some time in our lives. That is not the issue either. In my little corner of the development, cars come around that corner so fast, you would not believe it, and that is without the extra 200 cars they're going to bring in. Somebody's child is going to get hit and get killed. And my question is, if you put this in there, what are you going to think the next morning after that happened, after you allowed that to happen? It's going to happen. They can say, oh, well, our cars are going to go out the other direction. How do you know? There's no reason for the people from the lofts to come around in front of my house, but they do all the time and they don't go slowly. So we're just waiting for an accident to happen. There are four preschoolers that live next door to me. Parents try to keep them out back, but we don't have fences. Somebody's child is going to get hit. Then on top of it, you've got the school kids that are coming through. Not only these now, but with those extra apartments, you're going to have more school kids walking through. How are we gonna, how are we supposed to protect them? The other thing is, a young man said earlier that he's not a real estate professional. I am. Condo sales right now are sky-high. My clients that want condos, they look at what I tell them, if you want it, you better put it offer in it, in on it today because tomorrow it's going to be gone. Condos, townhouses, they are going like crazy. So to think that the only thing we can do with this plot of land, which everybody agrees something needs to be done, but the only thing to do is to put 170 rental units there, it just does not make sense at all. Okay, that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Jane Hallock.
Hi, I'm Jane Hallock. I'll make it quick because I know it's getting really late. I actually am a owner-occupied rental, so I've done, I've been in the rental business for about 30 years. So after listening to everybody and really respecting what everyone has to say is, I think what we're, what we'd like you guys to do is take another look at the density of the situation because from what I'm hearing and what I've seen, yeah, the buildings are nice and everybody likes to move into a brand-new house, have a brand-new car or things like that. Nobody's really questioning that. And I've worked with renters for over 30 years now. I, you know, we don't have anything against people that rent or anything like that, but I think what's happening here, just from listening to everything tonight, I'm kind of glad I'm the last one up almost because, is that it's, they're, they're trying to overbuild that area. I've seen that in Wexler Heights where they built that really big mansion in the middle of this very small area. I would never invest that kind of money and put that type of house in such a small area. They had to revisit the Nice Polynesian development because they wanted to build this huge, huge building on the corner where Nice is. The whole neighborhood, the whole city got together and decided they weren't going to let them overbuild it. I also respect the information they're talking about is maybe it's better that we really take another look at it, about putting condos in there instead where, you know, obviously you can buy a condo for which you could rent to. And keep in mind, I know this because I've been in the business of renting for 30 years, it's a transient business. You know, you, people don't stay renting their whole life. They move on, they buy, they buy a house or they move. I mean, it's constantly rotating and so they don't really have that long-term investment of staying there and pride of ownership. So I respect what everyone here has to say tonight, but I also think that we should really consider, I don't live that far from the area, but I really think we could, should respect and consider all these people that did buy those condos and what they were promised and what they were told. I mean, I can't even imagine, they've really kept composed tonight because I think I'd be so upset if that happened to me. I'm not right there, but I think we really need to think about what impact it's going to have on them and what their lifestyle is going to be like with all these people put in that small area. And I've walked through there because we do the cleanup of Columbia Heights and we've been doing it for a long time now and we've walked through that area and we've cleaned it up, we've tried to keep it looking nice. Just saying, maybe we need to relook at the whole thing as far as how large it is and really respect the folks that live there and the people around us. I mean, it, it possibly could affect me because I'm within about three or four blocks, but it is going to increase traffic and concerns. I have grandkids that go to those schools. I don't want them in harm's way, they have to walk up 49 there, so I think everybody's had a lot of valid points, pros and cons, but I just feel that we'd like you guys to take another look. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. I'm Joe Schlunder, I live at 4034 Monroe. Just want to say, I'm, I'm very excited to live in Columbia Heights. One of the things we're excited about is that we're very close to the bus line. We're able to go into Minneapolis easily, quickly. That's one of the 10 busiest routes in Metro Transit and is on the docket for upgrade to a more substantial bus rapid transit as ridership grows. So more people will help get more of those amenities. Also excited to have a place where we can walk to get dinner, maybe a little DQ afterwards, walk to a movie, walk to the park. More people will encourage more businesses where you can walk to them as well. I'm excited Heights is up and coming. This is an attractive town, that's why we moved here. I think as it continues to be more attractive, it will attract more people, more neighbors who want to call this place home. But unfortunately, we aren't blessed with the sand fields of Blaine or the gravel pits of Maple Grove. There's not going to be an empty place where we can put them. Our neighbors are going to have to live next to us. This right here is a premium site to add homes. It's walkable to our main commercial strip, it's walkable to transit that is on the docket to upgrade. And I urge you to accept the proposed density, to make the highest and best use that this experienced developer has found and to build this attractive building. In 10 years, if you think Columbia Heights is going to continue to be an attractive, growing city and we don't allow this density, we're going to kick ourselves when new neighbors show up and they don't have these units to live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Strunk.
Hello, my name is Michael Strunk. I live in condo 102 with my wife at 1070 Grandview Court Northeast. Basically, I, I love the, the points, but what, what just keeps hammering home is all the people basically against this, and we've had a firefighter, I'm in the medical field, but that firefighter has extreme experience on what to do on risky situations, whether that's too many people at a restaurant, a club, a bar, what have you. And if he's saying that risky, and everyone you hear saying it's going to be risky lives there. My wife and I live there, I go for runs there all the time. The gentleman that said he walked four or five miles a day talked about the traffic and the safety. And I 100% agree with him that when you put that many people there, it is just going to congest the area so much where the risk way outweighs the reward. And then you hear, I think you had the financial advisor say, well, renting's in, well, if renting's in, why don't you rent? You know, it's, it's kind of like, you know, and then, and then there was another woman that said, her nephew is just finishing college and he's only going to rent for the rest of his life. Well, he's 22, 23 years old, he doesn't know what he's going to do for the rest of his life. It's like, the, the area drew, drew my wife and I there because it, it allowed us to not only, I own a place in St. Cloud and I rent that out and I, and I have good renters, so I, you know, I'm, nothing against renters. But when my wife and I purchased that property and we were said, this is what they're going to do here, you know, when there's 180 units for three buildings versus 100, almost 180 units for two buildings, not counting the, I think it's 66 units in ours, that, that's way overload. And the safety issue is paramount with the school. Someone talked about a school is right next there. Yes, kids walk by all the time and they cut through that little, I'm not sure what, what street that is that runs right alongside us, but they cut through there to go to school and with traffic and the narrow roads, it's, it's just waiting to have an accident. And I think, you know, and you brought up some very real concerns of, well, the parking, I just can't get over the, the density, I might just, you know, that, that's a real issue and that should be a sticking point for you and you shouldn't be able to get over that. I'm not against something going there, but something appropriate. something going there, but something appropriate for that area going there is what we're all kind of wanting. Thank you. That's all I have.
You're done?
Okay, all right. Okay, we are done with the comments, and I thank you all for, um, I know the first time I got up to make a comment, I could hardly get the words out of my mouth, so you're brave. Um, and there's some good comments, um, both, in both directions, and we thank you very much for that. It's always good to know what the community is thinking, when you're thinking of doing something so huge as this. Um, we are guided by the zoning ordinance, and it is our job as a commission to interpret that, and to make our decisions based on the zone, the zoning. And, and so that's what our decision is gonna be based on, is what the, the zoning ordinance tells us to do. Um, and so, with that in mind, um, we are, we are going to recommend, and I'm gonna have Stan make the motion, because I don't usually do that, but, um...
Okay.
That, what you, and we, we have talked about what we want to do, so...
I'll make a motion to table the site plan approval with waivers until an amended site plan is submitted for the subject properties at ten, six, uh, sixty-nine Grand View Way and forty-seven twenty-nine Grand Avenue, which would include looking at staff recommendations for the density issue. Uh, they've written down all required parking should be, uh, provided underground and enclosed, and I don't see anything as far as that...
I think there was, wasn't there just two things?
Yeah.
Was there only two things on, on the list?
Yeah, I just had the, the two recommendations that, if the code has, it has, it allows for them to decrease their parking by thirty percent, and then increase their densities by fifty percent.
Yeah, and these things are all based on the zoning ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. And I need a second.
I'll second that.
A white motion has been made and seconded that we table this to try to make this pro- this project work. We don't know whether that's gonna happen or not, but, um, we give, give them a chance to try to make it work, according to our, our zoning ordinance. So, um, those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, so it doesn't go any farther than us right now, and, um, that's what we're gonna request. Excuse me, um, y'all. We have another item on our agenda that we need to address. So, um, if you wanna talk out in the hall, that's fine. Okay, Elizabeth, you wanna, um, I think we can move on...
Okay.
...to our other business, which is the two thousand eighteen land use fees and procedure changes.
Okay, so actually Joel's here tonight, and he's gonna take this...
Are you the, the one that's gonna take us through it?
He's taking this one.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
There's really not a whole lot to say. Um, you all have in your packet here the chart of fees.
Um, it's very difficult for us to continue our meeting. Could you, I'm, yeah, please take it outside. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, it, it, they're, they're in your packet. Um, basically, our department, Community Development Department, we have economic development, we have the planning and zoning, uh, area, and then we also have building inspections, permits, and licenses. And we haven't adjusted our fees in many years, and so we're at...
I don't even remember the last time they were adjusting.
Yeah, it's been a while. I think two thousand and nine has been...
Maybe?
The last time there was a major adjustment.
Yep.
And part of the reason that we're doing it, uh, now, to get ahead for two thousand and eighteen, is because we've added some things, not necessarily in the planning and zoning area, which is what I brought here tonight, but in the area of, um, for example, we now have microbreweries, and so those have their own types of fees and things like that.
Yeah, okay.
On Monday night, we're gonna be bringing the entire fee schedule for the Community Development Department to the City Council for adoption. The reason we do it this early is because we have contractors and people that have businesses that require licenses and permits and things.
Okay.
And Shelley actually needs to get letters out in October, if they wanna renew for two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, sure.
So we have to have our new prices set.
Okay.
So at the same time of all of that, we have, um, the list that you see here for items that come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we're proposing to, um, adjust some of these fees. And so, um, the ones that you see in red here, that, um, that represents the, uh, the new fees that we're looking at doing.
Okay.
The biggest reason that we'd be proposing increases to this has to do with, um, the amount of time, and, uh, the mailing costs and costs associated with processing these types of things. You'll see comprehensive plan amendment. Um, we're proposing that that go from five hundred to a thousand. That, um, a recent one I'll give you as an example is when the, uh, office building, the Northeast Business Center, went through all of that, um, proposal this summer. And that took quite a bit of staff time, quite a bit of mailing of people around it. And so, quite frankly, a lot more than five hundred dollars when, of city time went into, to processing that. So that would be why that would be such an expensive endeavor.
That one was huge.
And typically, a comp plan amendment to, wouldn't be, um, a homeowner, so it wouldn't be an undue, it would be a business. It would be some kind of commercial entity coming in, requesting a change of comp plan.
Okay, okay.
Um, the other one that's pretty major that I wanted to draw your attention to are the site plans. Right now, a site plan application of any size is only two hundred and fifty dollars. So Dominion, tonight, paid two hundred and fifty dollars for their application fee, which, um, we've noticed multiple times now because of...
Yes.
...different meeting date changes. Um, we've put quite a bit of...
It's gone way over what, what staff has, has put into it.
Whenever there's an attorney involved from any party that's involved, and so, we have to have our city attorney sit in, so that's why the city attorney was here tonight. His time costs money.
I know.
What we're doing is we're proposing that if something is under one acre, which is typically a smaller project...
Yeah.
Uh, that would be five hundred dollars. If it's over an acre, like the Dominion, it'd be a thousand dollars. And that's really in line with what other cities are doing. So if Dominion had paid a thousand dollars, it would have probably, at this point anyways, had just about covered what was put in, in terms of city resources.
How about a second site plan for the same site?
I would think that it would have to be, um, all over again, another charge.
It would be another charge, that's correct.
Right, right.
And actually, to answer that question, I think it's six months, right, Elizabeth? So if Dominion was denied, they can't come back with, with the plan for six months.
Okay.
And then when they do come back, if they came back, they'd have to pay another, in this case, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Um, so that's the deal there. Um, final plat, uh, the reason that we're actually proposing to kind of just get rid of that fee is because a final plat, back in the olden days, when you had a preliminary plat and a final plat, and everything was done by hand, there was, you know, an actual surveyor had to take the preliminary and then kind of redraw a final. Well, now everything's on the computer, so you basically take the final, it's approved, you know, change a few words, send us a document, that, now it's the final.
Right.
So it doesn't really require any work on our part, or anyone's part, to put that on the City Council agenda. So we're proposing to take that away. Um, uh, short-term rental permit, that's something that is cooking right now with the City Council. Um, that's, if you've heard of, like, Airbnb, that type of thing?
Of what?
Uh, Airbnb, where somebody rents their house, not for, like, a six-month term, but just for a couple weeks.
For Super Bowl?
For Super Bowl, exactly.
Like, Super Bowl, okay. I probably gonna have a lot of that.
We're, we're looking into what to do. Uh, it's something that the council's working on, um, and that, uh, one of the council members, I think it was council mem-, it might have been the mayor, actually, has, has kind of driven this. So we need to work with the council on this still. Um, but if the council does end up this fall, um, looking at this and making rules, um, we wanted to get this in there, so that there is a fee for permit, if there is one. Um, so that's in there. Um, other than that, we, variance, we wanna break that down now. Right now, they're all two hundred dollars. We thought if we broke it down between residential and all others, that way if you're a homeowner wanting to request a variance for a fence or something, you're not breaking the bank. Whereas if you're a commercial property, and you wanna request a variance for something, it's usually a little bit more extreme.
Okay.
So we thought that that should be a higher fee. Um, zoning amendments are pretty significant when somebody requests a zoning amendment. It's usually a business, and it's usually a lot of time, and it's usually somewhat controversial. So that's why we wanted to raise the fee there. Um, zoning letter, those, eh, seem like they would be pretty simple thing, but actually usually what we do is we get, uh, companies that request these things for real estate closings and those types of things.
Oh, really?
All kinds of information that we have to dig up for these, and it ends up taking quite a bit...
And it's time.
Quite a bit of time.
Yeah.
And also quite a bit of interaction with Anoka County and other agencies, so... Anyways, I, I'm sorry, I babbled on, but this is...
No, no.
We're proposing. If you have any questions, or have any suggestions...
I got one really long question. Has this been looked at by the city bean counter, city manager, and/or the city lawyer, or are you making this recommendation with no other input?
So, yep, the city, the city attorney has looked at this. Uh, the city finance department has looked, the city manager's also looked at this.
Okay.
You got me.
So it's going, it's going to the City Council on Monday. It doesn't require a public hearing, so it's not a public hearing item, but it is going to the City Council on Monday.
Do you require some kind of a...
You don't require anything from us?
No, it was an informational item.
This is just informational for us?
Yeah, and, and feedback, if you had any.
Okay.
That was mine.
Yeah, the city...
I would assume that others' powers of, to be have, um, that be have seen this, right?
That's correct. Actually, what the city's trying to do is make a citywide fee schedule, 'cause we don't have one right now.
Right.
Different departments have had different things for, like, copy fees. I mean, it's really just all over the board. Um, so they're act-, the city manager's office is working on doing that, so we've been working with them to kind of develop this. What's happening is we're actually going ahead of the, the whole city with ours, just because we need to get ours approved, so that they can get out on Shelley's letters in October. You'll probably see the whole city coming forward with the rest of the stuff, like, later in October, November, December.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Elizabeth?
I don't have a whole lot else to add. I guess I will say, we have an upcoming community open house for the comprehensive plan, um, and that is on Tuesday, September nineteenth.
I will not be in town.
That's right.
I'm leaving on the fifteenth, and I probably won't be home until the first week in October.
Well, for those that can make it, it's at the library from six-thirty to eight-thirty. And we will be having another open house, um, in November.
Okay.
And then they'll, we'll also have a presence at the Taste of Columbia Heights event later in November, so...
Is that even confirmed to be, no?
They're, you know they're talking about, I don't know, I don't know exactly what...
The dates are to be determined, is last I heard.
The rec department's talking about maybe taking, we don't know much about it, other than the rec department's...
Yeah, we're trying to get restaurants, me and Liz. We're, we're supposed to be going, trying to get restaurants, because they had said it was, or somebody else said it was canceled, and then Liz said no, so...
I think the rec department really wants to keep it, so, yeah, I'm not really sure what, what all their, I'm sure you know much more, but if, if they do have one, we'll be there, that's all.
And the only other thing I...
Are you still looking for input? Are you just letting people know now that, that it's, um, that it's in the process, and that there's going to be open houses for it?
So actually, at this open house, we are looking for input. We're gonna have, um, some models, uh, for possible, uh, concept plans for how University Avenue and Central Avenue and Fortieth Avenue, uh, for land use and, and economic development, and how things could change over the, the course of the next twenty years. So it'll be an interesting one to attend, if you can.
It'll be a good one, because people have something to react to.
In September, they won't be here.
Yep. Well, for, for those at home that are listening, that can.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, um, and...
Looking at concept plans is very interesting, and, and it really kind of gets, the juices flowing, as far as thinking about what the possibilities are...
Exactly.
...for, um, for your city, yeah.
And if people still wanna give feedback on how they wanna see the, the city change, or things that they love about the city, they can go onto the city's website, and go under the comprehensive plan update page. And there's a link to a fun survey tool.
Okay, well, thanks, you guys, for the hard work you're doing with, with this. It's not an easy task to get done.
Well, thank you.
This would have been my fourth one.
Oh, wow.
It's forty years.
Huh?
That's forty years.
Um, I, well, maybe not that. Well, when I came in, we were working on the plan that would have taken us for the next ten years, so, um, that would have been like in eighty... Eighty-three, eighty-four, that I came in, and I, whatever that, where, when you back it up, ten years, ten years, ten years.
Right, right.
And that was, that was what was happening when I was appointed to the, um, the Planning Commission, is that he said, aha, this is what's coming, and so now you'll be a part of this. And it was, it was crazy. So it got better, the process got better as time went on, but, but it's still not an easy process at all.
That's for sure.
'Cause you want, you want it to be just perfect, so... Okay, thank you, everyone, for staying so long for this meeting, and our agenda is complete, so we are adjourned.
All right.